Evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience with us as we continued with our closed session. At this time, I'd like to call the role Roger.
Here.
Nick.
Here.
Rosemary.
Here.
Myself here, Jennifer.
Here.
Jennifer, would you like to lead us in the flag slot?
Absolutely. Attention to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. So during closed session, we took action on item nine A1 with a motion from Jennifer, a second from Nick. It was a unanimous vote. We took action on item number nine B1 with a motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger. It was a four to one vote. We took action on items nine B2 through nine B23 with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Roger. The vote was unanimous. Took action on item nine D1 with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Rosemary. The vote was unanimous. We held out item nine D2 to go back into closed session after our open session meeting. We took action on nine D3 through nine D15 with a motion from Jennifer and a second from Roger. The vote was unanimous. And that's all for closed session. And we did make some adjustments to the agenda. We are striking, or we are adding number 16C for English learners. And we struck from the consent agenda, line 18C, document tracking services. And then at this time, we'll go right into special presentations.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Jill Wagner from Idea Emporium. If you'll recall, we entered into a contract for Idea Emporium, Jill Wagner, to look at our, to number one, and look at our communications, public relations. Also, we're really going to focus on parent engagement and community engagement. How do we more effectively communicate with everyone? And we just want to welcome Jill here tonight. And this is the Selma Unified School District Board, and we're glad you're here with us, Jill.
Yeah, thanks. I'm happy to be here. President Jess Jensen, trustees, Dr. Shepherd, and those present. I am Jill Wagner. I'm a public relations person from way back. I've been doing this my whole career in public education, public relations. It's been my specialty. I've worked in large urbans and small and medium-sized districts, so I have some experience there. And through that, I've become a crisis communications expert and especially strategic communications expert because you don't ever want to do stuff just to do it. You want to do it to achieve a goal or to stop something from happening, that kind of thing. So that's what I'll be working with the district on. I don't have a fancy presentation because I'm still in my collecting information phase. And, but I just wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight. The reason, and I think you know why you want communications, and it's if you do not tell your story, somebody else will. And you won't like it. And so it's really important that we get good information out there because it's really frustrating if people don't understand you. And if there's a void, it just gets filled in. And you can see that if you've run for office and you've seen elections and you've seen lots of examples of that. So people just kind of fill the void if there's no information going out. So I think effective two-way communication is the heart of school district success. They have to, all communication efforts will strategically support your district mission. It's not a one-off. It's intertwined with the goals you're trying to achieve here. Research has always shown that students simply do better when the parents and community are involved in their education. We see their test scores climb, remediation is not required as much, graduation rates can improve because there's a community around them supporting them. And people are aware of what their role is in student success. It isn't just drop the kids off at the curb, hope for the best, although some may do that, but communications kind of helps them. So we want to build meaningful, honest, two-way communications with the, with the publics. Districts with really good reputations have some advantages. You'll see their student achievement is higher. They can pass parcel taxes and bond measures fairly easily because there's community support. They attract, attract the best candidates for jobs that are open in their district. And they can attract growth in businesses to, to the community because people want to be around the magic. You know, and they'll go wherever that magic is. To date, I've been doing some research and some interviews and looking at some materials from very recent past, going way back. I'm talking to lots of people. I've been working primarily on tactics right now with the Selma Elementary Virtual Learning Academy. Getting that launched, doing the logo, creating an identity for it, and working with Michelle to kind of get a new thing known in the community. And she's doing a really great job with that. So I've been working with that. And I'm also working with your IT folks on website content and also social media and working with Norma, who does, you do a really good job. I think we want to increase engagement and tell other stories that have to be told. So I'm gathering that and based on the rest of that, which I should have this week, I'll do a plan. And I'll go over it with Dr. Shepherd, and then we'll move forward with the, the stuff that we need to get done here. I think one thing that sometimes gets overlooked in our quest to tell the community is we sometimes forget our internal publics, the staff. And staff is key to effectiveness in communications because you have all these ambassadors out there who can tell your story. But if they don't have a story, they also can be making it up. I don't know what they're doing. You know, nobody tells me anything. I think they're doing this and it's a really bad guess, but it gets out there. And then we're running around like, nope, nope, stop. And so I think getting regular information out to all employees and staff and telling them the role is really key. We want to arm people with excellent information. We want to highlight the strengths while working on the challenges. There is no perfect school district. Nobody has the magic of knowing what, you know, gets kids from here to here. But through research and data, we know what works. It's just never as fast as folks want. So you work on your challenges while highlighting your strengths. And that's okay. You know, there's this weird thing in public education that I've always wondered about because if you keep your grounds beautiful, impeccable, people are driving by going, look at that. Is that what you're spending our money on? Really? Shouldn't it be on education? But if you let them get a little ratty, they're like, how are you spending our money? You know, it's just a weird, people will throw rocks at you, pretty much anything you do. So our point is to say we're good stewards of money. We're following, you know, effective educational programs to get kids where they need to be. And, you know, these are strengths. Message development and control is really key. You don't want to change what you're saying every day. And I think people do that in reaction to pressure because outside people will pressure you. And that's not fun. And, you know, there's this saying in PR that just because someone is loud and persistent doesn't mean they're right. It doesn't mean they represent anyone else. We had a saying when district goes out, it's twenty is seven is one. Everybody hates this name. You guys are doing wrong, blah, blah, blah. Well, who? Who's mad at it? Oh, there's 20 people. 20 people. Wow. Who are they? I want to go talk to them. Well, maybe, you know, maybe there's not 20. Maybe there's seven. I think there's like seven, but they're really mad and they're community leaders. I'm like, oh, gosh, okay. So give me the list and I'd be happy to go talk to them and give them information. Well, it's really just one person. I don't know that so much, you know, because you feel this pressure, but somebody is loud and persistent. So you think you have to do something. And all we have to do is provide information and be transparent and above board and talk about the things we're doing and how people can engage with the solutions that are going forward. So that's fine. I think also we're working on reestablishing and strengthening the brand, you know, so when people think of the district, what do they think? I will tell you, all research shows that from the beginning of time in the Stone Age, people always think schools were better when they were there. Because they were there, right? And so it's like, it wasn't as good as when I was there. It's really better. And the kids actually have a harder curriculum than you did, but okay. But, you know, people kind of freeze in time. It's like, because they had the experience in the schools, they know all without knowing all the other things that are being dealt with. And I think we have to also communicate consistently with key audiences. And I'm working with Dr. Shepherd on identifying who those are. And I will tell you something weird that happened, that I was working for a district, we started communicating. They did not have labor peace. The, it was difficult. Everything was difficult. The principals were having a heck of a time. Everybody was. So we started communicating. Here's some facts. Here's the district budget. It's online. Look at it. You know, it's in real time. You can see whatever. We're not hiding money, you know, none of that stuff. So we did all this communications thing. The superintendent called me and said, they filed a lawsuit. I'm like, for what? For communicating. They said the district shouldn't be communicating because they had it good when the district didn't. You know, they were the only ones talking. And we actually went to court and the judge was like, I, I got to go. The judge was like, are you saying you don't want this public entity to communicate with its constituents? And they're like, that's right. The judge is like dismissed. You know, but, you know, sometimes people, if they've had their way in their messaging for a while, they get kind of antsy when it changes, but that doesn't change the core of that we're here to make it better for kids. You know, at a superintendent who wants his, said school districts are run for the benefit of the expense of the kids for the benefit of the adults. And it should be the other way around, right? And so the thing is to find the mechanisms by which people want to be communicated with. Be regular, be transparent, have some fun along the way, present the brand and give you some material too. So that when you're, you're comfortable talking to your constituents as well. And so I'll be doing work in that area and some training and whatever, Dr. Shepherd. And I kind of finalize in the plan. So that's, I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to be in the district. I've known it well and admired it for a long time. I live in the valley, so it's easy to do. Does anybody have any questions?
When do you start?
I have. I already started.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been coming, you know, it's interesting. When they say come see me and I go to the district office, they're not really sitting in the district office. They're way over there and they're way over here. And it's like 100 and 12. I'm like, okay, okay, fine. But I have tracked everybody down so far. Yeah. And I think there's just a couple more people I kind of want to meet as key on the team. And then get the messaging together and so forth and be prepared for when school opens. I'm working actually on a back-to-school plan. Yeah, there's a lot of questions about masks, COVID. The Delta variant is a very real thing in Fresno County. And the truth is in Fresno County, only 38% of people are vaccinated. Versus like in Marin County, what's 82%. So the schools have different, you know, things. So we're definitely working on a back-to-school plan so folks know what the expectations are. And regardless, masks or not, it'll be really good to see little faces, right?
So we, we've needed something like you, Mrs. Wagner, for a very long time. So I'm glad you're here.
I'm happy to be here and I'm happy I can serve. And I know sometimes smaller districts don't have budgets to, you know, have somebody full-time. But, you know, I, I think just with some experience and engaging more people, you know, internally and giving them permission to, you know, tell the, the message of the district and the brand and everything and having some talking points. So people are comfortable. So that's, that's a goal too.
Yeah. And right now it's, I think Selma unified the direction. We're pretty much doing like a 360 from the culture that used to be here. And I think we got a lot of great stories, a lot, a lot of things people don't know, and a lot of things we're going to do in this next couple of years. So, and I'm glad you're here to, to kick butt.
I'll do my best. And I, you know, I reached, Dr. Shepherd sent a message and I'm going to meet with at least one of you and, you know, chat about some thoughts that you have. So if you have any thoughts, Dr. Shepherd and Rose know how to get ahold of me and I'm available by email or phone. And I do do some traveling, but I'm always available. So, you know, if something pops in your head and you want me to know, just send me an email or text or something. I'll be happy to look at it.
We'll connect you on email again with her. And some of you, I know, yeah, I would like you to.
Already have a.
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Perfect. Because I think, you know.
I hope you got time.
I think she's going to be really helpful too in, in how we lay out as we start down preparing for 22, 23. How we're going to manage the information out about where we're heading, the cliff, financial cliff that we're going to need to deal with.
You and, you and every, every.
We're not going to be the only one.
No. No, declining enrollment is a theme everywhere. The birth rate, California, people are like, nah.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, it's statewide. Everybody I work with is dealing with that.
So I love what you said about tell your story. Jennifer brings it up all the time. Because in this town, the political climate on the other side of town is very toxic. And one of the things is if, if you keep saying something that isn't true, the perception is that it is true. And it's happened here for a long time. So I think that's why it's awesome to have you on board.
There's this thing on Facebook that's called, is around Selma.
I'm, I'm in that group now.
Yes. It seems to be where the majority of Selma gets their information from. And it's very interesting to read that. And yeah, I've said for a long, we need to tell our story and, and stay ahead of things and not tell our story, you know, tell our story first. Allow us to tell it and not everybody else to tell it for us. So yeah, happy that you're here.
Yeah, your information in other people's hands not necessarily could come out, especially when it's yucky stuff. Like when you have to deal with budget things. The more people know, the better, you know.
And be proactive instead of reactive. You know, that, that seems to be a difficult thing to, to be proactive and get out in front of things instead of trying to play catch-up.
Yeah, that's in that, it's kind of, I don't want to say in the way the news cycles work now, but a lot of people believe the first person out with the information wins, even though the information might not be correct. And so, you know, I don't like chasing because then I'm in crisis mode and I, I can do that. That's not a problem. It's nowhere you want to be because, you know, you are, you are the brand of the district. You know, the decisions you make and the teachers and the principals and the staff and the students. And people just need information so they know what's going on. And you don't want anybody guessing. It doesn't mean they're going to like it. I don't think they'll file a lawsuit. But I, until I went to court that day, I thought that was a big joke. I thought they were like pulling, pulling one on me. It's like, oh, yeah. So, I mean, it's important. It's also important that, you know, when you have, you know, negotiations with your, your labor partners and stuff, that they know what the district is up against because you're all up against it. You know, teachers are not separate from your district. They're a key part and a key role. And they need the information too. So we'll work on that. And I hope to talk to some of you coming up. I'll be in touch with the rest of you. Any other questions?
Very glad you're here.
Just excited.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next special presentation.
So I'd like to invite Dr. Leslie Martinez up to the podium. She is here this evening and I gave out a document that she put together. She came into my office after being here for a week and making some changes. And I thought you should hear from her directly versus on what's up in Selma. So anyway, here she is. Welcome to Selma.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. Does everybody have a little handout? Everybody's got it? Okay. So what I did before I even applied for the position here at Selma High School was I did a lot of research, research around Selma, research about Selma High School. And I wanted to come to a district that I could bring a vision with me and find things that I could definitely have an impact with and on. And so what I looked at were three key components coming into Selma High School that as the school leader, I can definitely focus on, that were, you know, definitely impactful things. So through my ability to kind of hone in on things that I think will be important, not just after a pandemic in bringing students back to the classrooms, but also from a, from a strategic standpoint, I would like to look at three key components. And as you can see on your slides, it's going to be, the first one's going to be curriculum. I think we need to have a really in-depth look at our curriculum that we're teaching at the high school. I think we need to definitely make sure that it is A through G. Because as we know that with the incoming freshmen, the new graduation requirements, all students are going to need to be A through G compliant by the time that they are graduating as high school seniors. I think we need to also look at the A through G rates that we currently have with our seeing, our graduating classes and see if we can increase those college-going rates. And then also we need to take a closer look at our behavior. We have a lot of students that are kind of disciplined in a more, in the traditional fashion. And when we look at suspension rates and a more reactive approach, instead of being proactive in how we look at working with students and making sure that they are learning from their behavior instead of just, you know, receiving a consequence. And when we look at Selma High School's five-by-five, we look at our color matrix. And I was very concerned when we look at the behavior matrix because we're already in the orange. And the, the next place that we could go if we don't improve our behavior is in the red. And when we go into the red and we have the state coming down and giving us, you know, kind of implementation strategies and things that can, you know, adversely affect us whether we like it or not. We don't necessarily want to go down that path. So that's definitely something we need to look at before those junctions or those negative consequences come into place. So if you want to go ahead and turn your, turn your hand out to the determining common curriculum school-wide. So this just gives you a brief overview. So when we talk about PLCs being conducted each week, what I've looked at in a couple of departments already is I look at the curriculum that they're teaching and I look at whether they're teaching it across all of the classes that they are, they are instructing. And if they're using that curriculum to really discuss whether students are being successful and if they're giving the, you know, what we call common formative assessments each week. And they're able to go back to their PLCs, which are their professional learning communities and talk about what those results are. So in an, in an ideal situation, each, let's, let's use an English class at the ninth grade level. Each English teacher should be using the same curriculum in each English ninth grade class. They should also be giving the same test. It can be a ticket out the door. It could be a quick five-question quiz to see if their students are learning. Now, they should be able to then go back into their professional learning community on Monday afternoons or Tuesday afternoons and talk about how their students did. Now, what they would do with that information is if one class scored extremely well and one class didn't score well, they would be able to have a dialogue as to what that teacher did during that week to teach that lesson. And then what they could do is collaborate on the teaching strategies that were used or how that teacher taught in that lesson to get their students to score well. And then that other teacher who may not have seen the same results could then use those strategies to teach their students in their class, hopefully being able to see better results the next time they took another assessment. For those students that didn't score well, what we can do is provide some intervention or some strategies to help them learn the material that they didn't. So by the end of the month, when they take that big summative assessment, that, that test them on all the strategies and all the content that they learned over the course of a month, hopefully they will be able to have learned the material that they didn't learn in this one season. By the time they take that summative assessment, they, they've been re-taught that, that curriculum. And by the time they take that big test, they've been able to understand it and they score well by the time they take that summative assessment. So that's kind of the idea of professional learning communities talking about data-driven instruction by looking at those CFAs and being able to reteach students in their intervention periods and times so that they are able to re-understand what they might not have learned in that specific timeframe and then go back and take the test and score better. We want more opportunities for students to be able to do that because if you think about it, over the course of an entire six or eight months, by the time we get them to the end of a course subject and they have to take a standardized test in English, math, science, or social science, we want to make sure that they've learned all the content. we want to make sure that they've learned all the content standards that they need to in order to score well on those, on those standardized tests. So the, the important thing here is I've come to find out that some departments are doing this really well and some departments don't really do this at all. So my goal is, is to really hone in on the departments that are doing it well and have them kind of mentor those departments that aren't doing it well. But we have to really make sure that the curriculum that they're using is common course standard aligned. It's updated and it really tests the standards that are on these high-stake exams that these students have to take. The other thing we really have to focus on is we're requiring all of our incoming ninth grade students to be A through G ready or compliant by the time they graduate. I looked at our master board and about 30% of our courses are not even A through G. So when we have freshmen coming in, taking a course on our master board and only half of them are A through G, we've already put that kid or that student on a path to not being successful. So that's my main concern because we're doing that in multiple departments. And that needs to be fixed and that's probably my number one priority. Now, when I look at the courses that Selma High School offers, there's no reason why our courses can't be A through G. Our teachers have to go back and look at them. They have to redesign them according to the College Board standards. And they have to change or update their course syllabus and the text that they're using to be A through G compliant. We just haven't made that transition yet. And as I'm talking to some departments, I, you know, I'll be honest with you. I'm having some difficulties with some teachers that are kind of resistant to the change. And I just need to know that this is a direction that the, the district wants to go and the school board's on board with because I'm, I'm willing to, you know, you know, make this a mission of mine because if we don't, then we just adopted graduation requirements that we can't, we, we can't as a district make our students or, you know, make our students successful to fulfill. So that is the curriculum component that I would like to focus on. And this is something that, you know, I wanted to bring it here first, but this is what I need to bring to my leadership team as well. And I've talked to my admin team and we're on board. But this would be definitely something that I would bring to my leadership team and hopefully we can all be on board together to move forward. The second thing that I would like to really hone in on again would be increasing A through G and college-going culture. I looked at, you know, there's a couple of programs in the high school, at the high school level that really support college-going and career-going pathways. And some of those are upward bound, avid and CTE. Now, we have a robust CTE program. It is amazing. I've never seen one so profound. And I just, we just need to continue to let it grow and prosper. And then we are already aligning, you know, when I came in, it was communicated through the VROP process that we are already aligning all those courses to be A through G. So I think we're really on a good path with our VROP programs. And the one thing that I think we need to really hone in on is increasing the rigor for our students. I think that, you know, there's some areas at which we can really improve on. One thing would be just a very easy process would be to increase the, increase the, oh my gosh, we just need to increase our, when we go out and.
I hate that when that happens.
Oh my gosh. So our avid kids, right, from eighth grade to ninth grade, we only have 15 kids in our ninth grade avid program.
That's not very many.
That is not very many whatsoever. So I wonder what the recruitment process, that's what I was thinking about. What the recruitment process is for getting students to be a part of our avid program at the high school level. Avid programs start students off in their ninth grade year. Your avid teacher sticks with you for four years and their whole job is to make sure that you stay A through G compliant. And they also make sure that you complete a pathway. You know, there's 12 ways to be A through G compliant and it's not all with your, your course selection, right? It's, you know, it's passing an AP class. It's passing an S VAP. It's passing, you know, your A through G courses. It's passing multiple ways. But anyway, you have that one-on-one person that you see every single day that helps you along that pathway. And they don't let you not be successful. That is the key component to, you know, that connection that kids have in an avid program. And I just, you know, I swear, I would be a millionaire if I could just think of a program that we can afford or we can support in a high school setting that a kid can have that connection every single year for four years, regardless of who you are. You know what I mean? Just think, if you're growing up and you're going to high school and you have that person for four years that supports you, that looks at your transcripts, that, that mentors you when you're having great days and mentors you when you're not having great days. But they stay with you for four years and that is your sounding board, right? Just like an avid program. Avid is very expensive though, but it's worth it because it's worth it in, you know, in strides because it makes that connection and it increases all of those numbers that we need to have that makes the school look good. But why can't we find something like that on a much larger scale for the 1,700 kids that we have? But what would that look like? I'm on a mission. So for now, you know, we really need to recruit more kids for avid. We really need to recruit more kids for, you know, leadership classes. Because in a leadership class, you can stay for four years. There's just different little, you know, pockets of programs that we can get kids in and make a connection. You know, like sports after school, you know, they make a connection with a, with a coach. And, you know, you see football, you know, football players, what do their grades look like during the fall? Miraculously, they're great, right? Because they want to stay eligible. But what happens in the spring if they don't have a sport to play? Not so good, right? So that consistency is important. The last thing that I really looking at, focusing on is behavior. So what we need to do is we need to, we need to decrease the behavior infractions, which will increase our five-by-five matrix. Okay? We can only, you know, theoretically, we can only go up by one color per year. So if we can make it from an orange to a yellow, we will be doing fabulous. The other thing that we need to do is we have a step program at Selma High School that actually suspends every single student at step six. Well, ed code changed in 2019, 2020 that says K violations cannot be suspendable. So we need to look at how we've been doing business and really rethink about what we're doing on step six so that we're not suspending K violations. So I have looked at redesigning the matrix so that at step six, we're only, you know, suspending those kids that have those top five behaviors that are suspendable and expellable. So we need to really look at that a little more closely and making sure we're following, you know, the proper procedures when we're disciplining students. But we also need to find out what we need to do to best meet the needs of those students that are those K violators. You know, those ones that are, you know, continuously, you know, being a disruption in the class or, you know, being defiant or, you know, refusing to do their work. Those are the kids that get in trouble the most, right? We don't have a whole lot of, you know, kids fighting or threatening each other or, you know, bullying somebody, you know, to the extent at which they need to be suspended and then, you know, come to you for an expulsion board. But we need to figure out what are we going to do with those frequent flyers? So we're going to devise a, you know, we're going to put our heads together and devise what that's going to look like in a step process. And then we need to come together to figure out what can we do to help these kids understand that what they're doing is not appropriate. And then this is what you do instead of what you're doing. You know, we have to find that replacement behavior, which is always important for kids. You know what I mean? Instead of, you know, throwing your pencil at somebody, we've got to, you know, figure out something else to do with your pencil. How about you write your name or you draw on a little piece of paper in the corner or something like that? So those are the three things that I would really like to focus on as far as the vision goes for this school year. Okay? Any questions on that?
Does everyone understand when she refers to the yellow, orange, red? You know what that's referring to? To the California dashboard?
Okay. So then if you go further back into your packet, it gives you a little need assessment. So with regards to how the school is going to function, I would like to take the opportunity to just tweak a couple of things. Nothing major, but what I did notice coming into the position as the principal was the leadership was a little bit different than anything I'd ever seen before. So we had a deputy principal and we had a program manager. I've never seen a program manager at a high school. I know we, you guys had figured that a program manager high school was different than an elementary school and it gave them five additional days. But when I look at the requirements for a high school administrator, we're talking about at least 80 to probably 150 plus hours outside of the school day. So the five days is nice to have after, you know, the school year ends. But it's not, it's not enough to be able to really justify the timing that an administrator at a high school level actually spends outside the school day. We're at every, you know, every tournament, every athletic event, every banquet, every, you know, game, every. I mean, there's just a ton of, it was like four pages of supervision, just trying to divvy it up between three people. So what I proposed to Dr. Shepherd was, when looking at the administrative duties, and I attached it to the very back of your packet, I proposed to have a deputy principal over curriculum and instruction, which does the master board, does the attendance, does credit recovery, does part of discipline as 11th grade, you know, oversees the textbooks, registration, student enrollment, transfers, summer school, tier two and three interventions. So, you know, an abundance of work for that person. And then all of the departments that they have to oversee, including going, doing classroom observations, walkthroughs, evaluations, along with the day-to-day people in and out of your office and just, you know, life as it happens. What I'd like to do for the, the other position is remove the program manager and make it a, the equivalent. So we're looking at, instead of doing an assistant principal, we do another deputy principal. And they have the equal amount of responsibilities. So they would, you know, oversee athletics. They would also do classroom walkthroughs and evaluations. They would coordinate all the supervision, so the CSOs and where they're located. They would also do discipline of ninth and 10th graders. So that's an abundance of what they do during the day. They would do the expanded learning. So everything after school. And in regards to support and intervention, they would take care of all the technology, all the Chromebooks, the Macs for teachers and make sure that everything gets, you know, checked in and fixed in a timely manner. They would oversee all testing and all surveys. They would also do all the required drills. They would write the state school plan, Saturday school for students. They would do tier one, which is, you know, 80 to 90% of our student populations for intervention. And they would oversee the school website, making sure everything's uploaded. And then they would see their departments as well, which is about six to seven departments. The, the duties are the same. When you look at it, you know, across the board, the responsibilities are equal amongst both administrators. The other thing is, is that, you know, when I'm looking at and when I've talked to a deputy principal versus the program manager, in the past, they haven't been treated the same either. And that was a big, it was a difficult part of being in that position. You know, having a conversation with a deputy principal and having a conversation with a program manager. There was definitely a difference of, the level of communication to both was definitely not on the same level. So one felt like they weren't an administrator and the other one was, felt like they were an administrator. And I never want to be in a leadership position where somebody doesn't feel like they're an equal leader. And that kind of comes at the high school level with that kind of understanding. I'm just a program manager. I'm not an administrator. Or I'm not an assistant principal or I'm not a deputy principal. It just, that's just kind of how it is at the high school level. You know, I don't know exactly why they necessarily feel that way, but that's how it's been communicated. So as an advocate for my, my leaders, I just want to propose that they, they also, they both have that equal feeling. And because when we look at them across the board, there's no reason why they shouldn't be. When we look at the task analysis, there's no reason why one should not have the same title as the other one based upon what they actually do. Okay? And then the other thing is we have an extra position, I feel it's extra, but again, I'm new here, that I would like to collapse. And that would be the athletics and ESB secretary. And I would like to make that a secretary for the administrators. That seemed to be a position that kind of went away with COVID for 16 months. Nobody seems to have missed it. So to lessen the load or lighten the load of administrators, I would like to have there be a secretary or administrative assistant for administrators. And then they can, that person can then take on the athletic administrative secretary piece. And then my secretary would actually take on the ASB secretary piece because I'm going to oversee that, that piece of it. And as you can see, my duties are definitely a little bit different than you've probably seen in the principal's duties. I did take on it a little bit more than what's been, at least it's been communicating to me. It's a little bit more than what's usually on there. And I will also be overseeing quite a few departments and then staff as well. So my secretary will be a little bit busier than she's used to. I'll also be doing all the budgets and things like that. Any questions on this?
So I want to echo that when the, the, her proposal aligned with my thinking as well because I've ne, I'm not seeing a program manager at a high school before. So I think that, I believe the thinking is appropriate. There is something, you know, it's just a philosophical thing or whatever. But I, I do think that the movement to a deputy principal, plus with particularly with all the massive duties that have to be accomplished. So I, I, this is more in line to what I've seen in other high schools. So for a nominal increase. So one of the things that came to my attention when I first came here was about learning directors. And again, how you name individuals on a site. But you use, Selma High has always used them as the counseling department. And so that's something that with counselors, you can't do discipline. I think that's one, why don't you explain that, which is kind of got kind of fuzzy there. So.
That's another thing that I've changed and you'll, you'll be able to see that. I don't know how much you knew about learning directors prior to what you're seeing before or what you're seeing now as the learning director duties. When I came in, the learning directors were doing discipline and they were doing evaluation of staff, staff departments. So one of the learning directors. So one of the learning directors had English, one had foreign language, one had PE, and one had social science. So I took that all away. Um, I don't, you know, my philosophy is, if you're not a supervisor, you shouldn't be evaluating staff. Um, I don't feel that they should be responsible for, you know, writing evaluations and overseeing departments that they're not, not a boss, but they're not a boss. So I took those back, and I put that on the administrators' duties, and then also they were doing discipline, which is a conflict of interest in my mind, because how are you going to discipline a student one day, and send them home for five days for getting in a fight? But then the next week you come back and they're behind in their course, course of study, and you say, "Well, why are you behind? How can I help you?" But then they say, "Well, you just suspended me for five days, what do you expect?" You know what I mean? So how can you have that, the, the different levels of interaction with a student when, in my mind, student achievement is going to be our main focus, especially after, you know, what students have been through and the amount of Fs that they have. Um, and I don't want them to have that conflict. Learning directors, as you can see on their job duty, is just about having conversations with kids, looking at their four-year plan, making sure they're passing their classes, making sure their transcripts are in line with the graduation requirements. Um, having, they're gonna have one-on-one conversations with students twice a year now. They've never had one-on-one conversations, they have them in large groups. So I'm gonna free up their days from doing discipline, so they can actually have those conversations with students throughout the year.
And parents.
And parents, right.
That was another problem that several people brought to my attention, yeah.
Parents weren't signing their four-year plans.
Right.
So parents had no idea what the course of study was. They didn't even know, you know, if they passed or didn't pass, you know, an English class. They didn't know what CTE program they were in, they didn't know that they were graduating a CNA program. And here they were, going to, you know, Reedley College, accepted in this, you know, great program that they just completed two years in, at Selma High School for. So there's just a huge disconnect between what students are doing, how much time learning directors have to invest in students, and being able to close that gap between parent communication, student success, student needs, and, you know, just being able to really focus on the, the achievement gap that we're seeing, and also, you know, really being able to bolster those kids that can benefit from rigor, putting them in those classes and challenging them. There's a, there's a huge gap between that. And the other thing that we really need to focus on is the fact that Assembly Bill 104 was just passed. And what that is, is for every student that has received an F or a D in their class, they're gonna have the ability and the opportunity to retake it. So that means we're gonna have to have more teachers, more sections, and more available opportunities for all these students to retake these classes. And then for those students who don't have the time to retake it, we're gonna have to have conversations with parents, that are gonna have to afford them the opportunity to take a fifth year. That's for all, what, juniors and seniors this year. And then, if they still can't make it, then they're only gonna be required to take the state, the state-required graduation requirements for a diploma. So we have all these different bowls in the year that we're gonna have to organize and figure out and communicate, that we're gonna have so many kids on different tracks, these learning directors are really gonna have to be able to focus on who's on what, who we offer to, who, and who's gonna do this, and who's gonna do that. And then we have to, we talked about the school within a school, sorry, I'm taking so long. Um, the school within a school we need to develop for the kids that need to take this extensive on-track credit recovery and still be able to go to school, and the kids that aren't gonna wanna come back to school yet, we're gonna have to offer them something. So we have a lot of just different things happening, and, um, I really need a solid team to be able to work with to be able to make this happen. Any other questions?
I think that was a great presentation.
I think the, um, parent engagement part
Oh, yeah.
is, is crucial. As a parent of a senior who just graduated, I think he could have benefited from the Avid program, I didn't know it existed until his sophomore year. So if, if we get more information to the parents, um, maybe we could get more students in those programs.
Absolutely.
So, and I, and I appreciate the piece on parent involvement in their master schedule.
Yeah.
Because I think we have underachievers and overachievers that both need to find balance.
Absolutely, I've seen that.
Good point.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Dr. Martinez, uh, it seems like you have a lot of things needs to get it done, uh, we really appreciate it. Um, the student achievements, um, scores, those are always my concern, and that, that's really needs to be up on it, the kids are getting F, D grades, low grades, there's a, uh, you guys have to figure it out how we have those students to take care of it. Um, like I meant, I, I think we heard that last year, there was some students gonna make it, you know, for the graduations and so forth. So those are the really concern for me to be having the scores brought up to the school, so we could be proud to back again, our schools, doing high school doing really good.
Absolutely, it is a focus.
And I, I, I think we all need to keep in mind, it's gonna be really rough. It's definitely a mental battle, but I think we need to keep in mind that what's best for our students is not gonna be easy for the adults. And I think that definitely has to be kept on our forefront, you know, when this stuff's brought to us, it's, it's not what's easiest for the adults in the room, or on staff, it's what's best for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next presentation, speaking of student achievement, is, uh, Norma, will be coming up, and since I started working with Ed Services more directly, this is a group of students who definitely need more attention. And, um, or not more, but going back to some core issues that I learned a lot with meeting with Norma. So, uh, I wanna outline, ask her to come forward about where we're heading, and by the way, some of the things that Dr. Martinez brought up about looking at student data, meeting with teachers three times, with all the principals are gonna be doing that, the PLC process that we're gonna roll out. Every three, every three Tuesdays a month, the principals are gonna be expected to be working with their teachers on the scores, and what is the instruction that needs to change to meet the need for the students, with the teachers. And it's gonna be really focused on academic achievement. So what she outlined, we're gonna be outlining for every principal and bringing them support for that, so. With that being said, uh, and EL is gonna be one of those areas that we definitely need to attack, so, let me turn it over to Norma, and the reason we wanna do this too is to explain why there's a couple agenda items on here of restarting, we're resetting a couple of things, so that's part of the reason why I wanted her to share the redirection of EL services.
Good evening, good evening, Board President, Board Members, Dr. Shepherd, Executive Cabinet. And we're, as Dr. Shepherd said, we're here to talk about English Learner Services, which is a student group that is critical to student achievement. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about, it's both critical in that we wanna make sure we're addressing the needs of our English learners, but it's also critical, because when our English learners are reclassified, they're a group that give us, could give us extraordinary data, and so we wanna maintain that. So if we can go to the first slide. So what we're proposing is to secure consulting services for twenty-one, twenty-two, to assist us in providing professional learning and coaching services to support English learner students. I heard, I was at a training a couple of years ago, and, uh, the presenter said, you know, oftentimes we hear folks say, "Well, teaching English isn't a rocket science." Uh, and he said, "It is." If you've tried to learn a second language, um, either, you know, to go with fluency or just for vacation purposes, if you've tried that, or, you know, those of us who came into the school setting, haven't spoken a, uh, primary language, it isn't easy. And so it isn't easy to learn a second language, it isn't easy to teach a second language. There is a great amount, amount of, um, work that goes into it, knowledge, expertise that goes into teaching English as a second language. Next slide.
So with that, let me add something to that. As we look to our principals, our site administrators to be the instructional leaders, they need to look, they need to know what to be looking for in the classes for English learners. So this coaching that she's talking about, which is one of your agenda items, twenty B one, is to provide that support to our administrators, okay? They'll be actually coaching them, walking through with them, helping them understand, this is what you should be looking for, this is the expectation, so they can remind the teacher or support the teacher in teaching English learners, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. So we have about seventeen hundred English learners in the district, which is a slight increase, and that is in part because we've, um, reclassified fewer students in the last couple of years. I've been in the district this, I, I believe in August I'd start my thirtieth year, and I've been looking at this data for a long time. And our data has been very consistent. We, every kindergarten class, about forty to fifty percent of that class comes in, um, identifying as an English learner. Um, and so the numbers haven't changed very much. We're in a community that, that values, um, multilingualism in the home and in our school setting, and so every year that data has been consistent. We are a little higher than we normally would be. Um, that's about twenty-eight percent of our population. In two thousand nineteen, um, when every English learner is, um, we're required to provide an English proficiency test, this is to determine how proficient, where they are in proficiency levels in English. And in two thousand nineteen, uh, ten percent of our English learners were at a level four, which is proficient. And I, I was here for that conversation, I remember Mr. Green, um, made a comment about that, uh, because that is, we need to increase the number of English learners reaching, um, English proficiency. And that was down from twenty-eight, twenty-five percent in two thousand eighteen. The English test that students take is not, um, it is a rigorous test. I've, um, looked at some research, and what we understand is if a student reaches level four on this English test, they are very likely to reach levels three or four on the math and cast, uh, the English Language Arts Assessment. So we know, research has shown us, that if, once we get students to proficiency in English, they will reach those high academic levels for us in, um, English and in math. In, um, two thousand nineteen, only ten percent of our English learners were even eligible for reclassification. The three-year average reclassification draped, uh, rate has dropped from two hundred and fifty-seven to hundred and twenty-one from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty. Um, part of that, of course, is, you know, we had our distance learning last year, LPAC testing was interrupted. Um, and so we wanna keep in mind those things, but we also wanna look at our past history before COVID and get back up to those levels. Um, English learners scored thirteen perc- uh, scored thirteen percent standard met or exceeded in ELA. So if you look at all of our students together, we're at about a forty-two percent, where for English learners, it's thirteen percent. In math, um, we are, for all students, we're at twenty-three percent, for English learners, we're at a seven percent. That single digit for math is really, really something that we need to work on for all students, but specifically for English learners and students, um, identified and receiving special education services. And then our reclass, but I wanna point to this, because this is, this is, I think, what is important, this is what we're going after, is when we help students reach those proficiency levels, when they take the state test, our reclassified students, they need to meet all four criteria, one of them is reaching level four on the LPAC, they are, sixty-three percent of those students are exceeding or meeting the standard. That's huge. Um, again, for, when we look at all students, we're looking at forty-two percent. You're looking at reclassified students, they're at sixty-three percent. So we wanna maintain and increase that achievement level for our reclassified students. And one of the ways that we are able to do that, will be able to do that, is to increase the number of English learners who are reaching English proficiency. Next slide. Uh, when I meet with D-LAC, this is just something that has kind of become a, uh, tradition for us, is we go over our data, and then they ask, "Well, how are we doing in comparison to everybody else?" And so I, I always have it ready for them. So this is the last, um, dashboard data that we received, so this would have been in winter of two thousand nineteen. And so you can see by districts around us, and I always put Chula Vista, if you've been on the board, you know that I looked at Chula Vista, they're a very progressive district, um, high number of English learners, and just really, really perform well. So I wanted, you know, just like I do with our D-LAC members, wanted to show us where we are. This is, and the number of English, the percentage of English learners that are making one year's growth, which we would expect, or are staying at that level four. So for Selma Unified, it's about forty-four percent of our students are meeting our goals in comparison to other districts around us, also something we want to improve upon. Next slide. So what is it that we're required to provide English in order to reach those proficiency levels? First, um, we do, are required to provide designated ELD, and this is a set aside time for the teaching of English to English learners. In our primary grades, there is a lot of deployment, so I might take students who are at the emerging level, those newcomers, beginners, and another teacher may take the students that are at the upper levels of, uh, LPAC, at the secondary, um, levels, that's a class that they're taking. We're also required to provide integrated ELD, which is supporting English learners in all subject areas. Um, this is, uh, critical, that not only are we teaching our students English through that designated ELD, when we're teaching them other content areas, we wanna make sure that our teachers understand and remember that these are students who are not proficient in English. So there are certain strategies, there are certain routines and scaffolds that we want them to provide, because we don't wanna lower the bar. We want to keep that bar high for our English learners, but we wanna then provide the scaffolds and the supports to help students reach those high, um, expectations. So this is, um, not just Selma Unified, this is traditionally the, the model that districts around us in the state of California use to provide services to English learners. One is professional learning, ongoing professional learning, refined, based on student data, teacher need, coaching, as Dr. Shepherd talked about. So it's, it's hard work on the student's part to learn English, it's hard work on that teacher's part to teach, and it is also hard work on the administrator's part to be able to recognize when that teaching is meeting the needs of students, and then also, um, have the tools and the resources available to help teachers, um, who may need support in that work. And then key, just like any other academic area, monitoring of instruction and learning. And that's a new piece for us that we, we're looking at. Um, what does it look like when students are making progress towards that level four? Um, just like every other academic area, we don't wanna wait till the end of the year, take the test, and then find out in August or September how we did. So we are looking at a progress monitoring tool that we can use to help gauge, um, and then also using our existing assessments, like the STAR assessment, um, some of our writing prompts, to help us make sure that we're able to see how our students are doing towards those proficiency levels. Next slide. So I, I'm, I was trying to think, I was looking at this, I thought, "Why did I include it twice?" I just wanna, I think I just wanted to make sure that there are those things that we do for English learners, the students themselves, and then there's those things that we should be doing for our teachers and our administrators in order to meet those um, linguistic and academic goals for our English learners. Next slide. And so what we're looking to do with the support of the services that we're bringing forward, um, to, to our board tonight, is to provide professional learning on the use of the Selma Unified Progress Monitoring Tool, and to be used to monitor both teaching and learning. And we're, we looked, we're creating something that is, um, going to be easy to use for teachers, but powerful in planning instruction, and again, monitoring. We wanna be able to quickly in those PLCs say, "Okay, of my ten English learners, I've got two students that are falling behind. What are we going to do? How do we support these two students?" Um, provide coaching for teachers and administrators in English Language Development Instruction, and then engage in data analysis for English learners in professional learning communities. Uh, again, using all of the assessments that we do have, how do we, how do we hone in on the specific needs of English learners and the data, um, for that student group? We want to increase our goals, is to increase the number of students reaching English proficiency in the LPAC, and that can only be And that can only be done through high-quality instruction that is specific to English language development with teachers who are, are very competent and comfortable in providing that instruction. We want to increase the number of students that are reclassified. Students remain in our data for four years. So every year, those kids at the top end of the four year drop off. Well, if we're not adding more reclassified students, then we begin to get a smaller group of reclassified students. And again, they're, they're a great contributors to our student data. And then, of course, to maintain the CASP achievement levels for reclassified students. They score that high because we, we are able to get them to English proficiency quickly and very strong and ready to go with academic, academic learning and English, math, science, all those other areas. So it's important for us that we address our English learners so that we can maintain, we can reclassify a great number of students. And we know that when we reclassify students, that they do exceptionally well on our state assessments. I believe that is my last slide.
So one of the items on, on twenty B three is training for English three D curriculum that the district had used in the past. It kind of, we need to restart that because it was very successful. So that consultant contract is to provide training and to support that particular area. Okay? Any questions, Corinne? So our principals will, I'll be sharing next week, the training program that we're going to put our principals through. And one, there'll be dedicated time to train and work with our principals on these issues. So that it's going to be very clear what the expectation is that our principals will be monitoring instruction and student achievement in ELS. So.
So we, okay, I, we used to have coaches, that this was their role, was my understanding, was to be ELA coaches. And that was what they were supposed to be doing. So it's just really frustrating to me. We've gotten rid of those and now we're going to bring in a consulting firm to do what our own staff was supposed to have done all along.
So what?
Maybe this was a question for what we did.
No, that's fine, we can talk about it. So I think the difference here, what I'm really looking at, which I think is a gap in our district, is that our, our administrators, our teachers were being coached, but our administrators need coaching on how, what to do to support the teachers and what to look for. Teacher co, coaches, academic coaches should not be coaching leaders. I mean, they can help them. And that's where there's been a big gap with, I've seen. So these, like for instance, the English learner group, will be working with the principals directly. So, so that they are responsible to make sure the teachers are teaching, not the, the coaches. And that's, I'm expecting our principals to be, take leadership in all educational areas and be out there and monitoring it. So that's the difference.
That's what they should be doing.
Yes, but I think, I think what I, in my analysis and what I've learned and what other people that we've brought in to help us, have I seen is that because you've had so many teacher coaches, the principals, not all of them, but I'm just saying there's kind of like, well, the teacher coaches will do it and I don't need to be directly involved. I wouldn't say that for everybody, but I do think that you become, it's kind of a different culture. I've not seen that before.
Yeah.
So, and if you'll recall, I've said, when I first came, and it's been identified by other people coming into the district, how many coaches you have, teacher, academic coaches. But still, your academics are still poor. So there's something, a missing gap there. And I think building up our capacity of our administrators to really take charge of what happens in every classroom.
Yeah.
That's what these coaches will help them do.
Yeah, and then going forward, as we hold more people accountable, principals are going to be accountable every year.
Yeah.
That's something I think that's been lagging is accountability throughout the, the district. So, but I see it coming.
Yeah, and the structure is making sure, like, we've had, I was going to go over it next week, but I'll do it now. Like, the PLCs, you know, we're telling them every Tuesday, PLCs. And you heard Dr. Martinez talk about every Tuesday the PLC, except one day a month. And if we don't need it for PD from the district level, that's another day where everybody's really focused on data and how do we adjust our instruction to meet the needs of the kids.
Yeah, I just hearing it sounds great. That's why Mrs. Wagner, I think is going to be a great asset to the district.
Mm-hmm, to communicate that.
Yeah, it's going to tell, that's like a story.
Right, that's our story.
Yeah, we turn it around and flip it.
But the pieces in the past is a big casualty.
Yes.
Right.
We've done all of this in the past and it was never.
It hasn't worked. So now you're going to be, you're going to have the principals doing it. And you're going to hold them accountable.
Correct, that's my job.
Yeah. Sounds great.
And if I may add, that part of the work will also be working with our existing coaches. You know, we've, we're into maybe the second and third iteration of our coaching model. And so through that, we've lost some of those folks who had EL expertise. So part of the work will be building up the capacity of the coaches that we do have so that they can work side by side with teachers. And then working with the consulting folks who bring in an expertise that, that we at this point can really use as our, you know, jumping off point as a district. So definitely building up the capacity of our coaches, as Dr. Shepherd shared. Once administrators also ramp up their ability, then they will also be able to work more effectively with.
With the coaches.
And, and teachers in order to identify what are those things that we need to provide our English learners.
Right, right. And I think too, that, that when principals have that, we, we invest in them, then they can deploy the academic coaches and versus the academic coaches telling the principals what's going on. And I think that was a disconnect that I heard from your site leaders was they, they need to know what, where the gaps are. And then we deploy our team of coaches to support the principal, the teachers that they've identified. So it's just reshaping what you're doing, but we got to invest in our administrators.
Yeah.
And I have to say this one, this English learner group, when I worked at Parlier as a consultant, helping them with FPM and back a couple of years ago, they did a, use this English learner group. And when I met with each of the principals whose schools were under scrutiny, raved about how helpful it was because they're all experts in EL. And then they walk in with the principal side by side and they talk about what's happening and what should be happening and what's not happening and what are you going to do about it as a principal? Because quite frankly, my background is not EL. So, you know, and none of us, I don't know, I don't think we even had an administrative class on EL. I'm so old, but, so it's, so it's kind of like, we're, we're building our capacity and it's going to help them to be better and stronger leaders. And anyway, they raved about this English learner group and how much it helped and the, the growth in a couple of the schools I was working with was pretty significant. So I'm excited that we were able to get them as well. So, thank you.
I have a question. I know we created, during the distance learning last year and this year, there's some programs that I remember you guys implemented into that. Is those are going to be continuous, you guys are going to be using for English learners? I remember there's some monies that we use for, from the CARE Act.
We, we just talked about that recently. We're looking through the list of some of the programs and platforms that were purchased over the last few years and making determinations. Certainly, and looking at, the one I can think of off the top of my head is Imagine Learning. We purchased to support English learners.
Right.
And that could definitely be something we continue to use with a very specific set of students, of English learners, students mostly at the emerging level or the beginning level of English. And we'll continue to use E three, English three D and our Read one eighty for the literacy ELD courses at the secondary. So we are looking at, at all of those and know that some of them, yes, we will be continuing to use.
And some we will not because there's too much. And, and I think there's some confusion. Dr. Neal's been working with Norma and Stella both about what are, what are, you have to do and what are these extras? And we have tons of extras that we need to narrow down so that we're having a document that says, this is what you have to do, here's great supplemental, and these others are going to, and when you add, add it all up, it's pretty costly. So it's not just budget, it's just, there's only so much room in the day. And we want to make sure that what the board approved curriculum is taught. And I'm not so sure that that's happening through every room. So we're going to narrow that down to make sure that's.
Is it a English learners problem in the middle school or elementary or is it high school? Where do you see most of the students?
We, we, the, the largest numbers are at the elementary, right? Because we're kindergarten through sixth grade. One of the student group, one of the English learner groups that we are going to create a special focus for are what's called a long-term English learners. It should, it should normally take a student between five to seven years to be fluent in English. And so roughly, if you started in kindergarten with Selm Unified, that should be about your sixth grade year, fifth, sixth grade. We should be reclassifying you. What we find is there are students who, for, for many reasons, including, you know, possibly our instruction, they're not be, they're not reaching those levels. And so they go on into the middle school and then on to the high school. English three D is a, is a curriculum that it's, that is created by Dr. Kate Consella that is specific to those students. And it is very rigorous. And when taught with fidelity, we saw that, that year that we implemented fourth through twelfth grade, we saw a twenty percent reclassification rate. That's the highest it's ever been in our district. And so the numbers may not be large at the middle school and the high school, but the need is very intensive because they've been in the program for a long time. And so we have to do something different for those students.
Yeah, because the reason was my son was in that program somehow. He ended up in there at the elementary level. And then we had to talk to the principal, have him, get him out there. So there's no, not a, I don't think sometimes that nobody evaluating, you know, those are students taking them out if they're fluent in English or they're making progress on it. A lot of times those students end up in middle school and in high school, you know.
Yes, and, and I, I understand, I know exactly what you're talking about in terms. And that's another point of monitoring for ourselves, is making sure that we're digging through the data so that when students reach those reclassification rates, they need to be reclassified, right? And that we're monitoring, why, why is the child in sixth grade and not close to reclassification? What do we need to do? Our goal is to reclassify as many of our students as we can before they ever leave sixth grade so that we have smaller numbers at the middle school and the high school. And we were, we were doing that, but again, COVID, those types of things, our numbers are increasing at the middle school and high school. So we really have to focus our work there to help as many of those students reach reclassification.
Yeah, last thing, one more thing. When, when you register your kids to the school, first time, they put it on a languages they speak at home, Punjabi or whatever. And then they put, put them classified as the other one, but doesn't need to be it. Nobody evaluating it. Once you have them in there, then you are stuck to there like till you see them after four, five years, you know.
Yes.
Those are, we need to evaluate those too.
Yes, and we, so we do need to work with our school sites to make sure that there's someone who's explaining to parents what the home language survey, how you complete that, what the questions are. And then also to let parents know that when you, if you do put a different language, that we will give them the LPAC test. And if your child is fluent, then they will not be placed in ELD. If they're not fluent based on that, then they are, we do offer those services. And under new guidance, parents have the option to opt out of EL services. That requires a, you know, a meeting with the administrator and a discussion. But yes, something we need to work with our sites is to make sure that there's someone there explaining to parents what that home language survey entail.
Yeah, during the elections last year, I met a lot of parents. They were complaining on it. They were just fourth generation here. Theirs kids were put it into their program, English learner. And I have some of those names too. And it was very upset. They were like, why my students in those classes? And they were kind of complaining and, you know, they need to be moved into the different classes or, or sometimes there's mistakes that would lead to that too.
Yes, so definitely an area to, to continue to work on. And the flip side of that is that when students do receive ELD services and those services are high quality, we know that academically, our students do very well. So we want to make sure that if students are identified as English learners, that parents understand what those services are and that they are high quality. So that parents feel like their students are really getting something through those designated ELD courses.
When we do, Norma's going to be doing training with all her principals. Let's put that down and I want a written protocol on that of how it's going to be handled.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, an opportunity is provided for individuals to address the board on topics within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board not listed on this agenda. If you wish to adjust, address the board on an agenda item, please do so when that item is called. Presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes with a total of thirty minutes designated for this portion of the agenda. Time limitations are at the discretion of the president of the board. The individuals with questions on school district issues may submit them in writing. The board will not take actions, but will instead refer to the superintendent any formal requests that are brought before them at this time. Is there anyone who would like to address the, the board on public input at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Come on computer. All right, the consent agenda includes recommendations on routine and administrative actions, which are usually approved by a single majority vote. Board members have the opportunity to remove any items from the consent agenda to be considered and voted on separately. Each item on the consent calendar approved by the board shall be deemed to have been considered in full and adopted as recommended. Are there any items that the board would like to have removed at this time?
Just re, renoting that, eighteen C has been pulled.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Seconded.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Nick, Roger.
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Rosemary? Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
So moved. Donations.
Andrea?
Good evening, can you hear me? And the, we received a donation from Vincent Trevino III in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and one dollars and seventy cents to be donated to room eight, Mrs. Aranda's ASC account.
What school is that?
Washington School.
That's wonderful.
Make a motion to approve donations.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. Nick?
Aye.
Rosemary?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
So moved. Onto new business.
Go ahead.
Of the, item twenty A one is Hooten Micklin Hardcore K-Six mathematics instructional materials, fiscal impact of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-four cents to be purchased out of the instructional materials realignment budget.
And these are consumable materials that go with the K-Six math program. So, for all the students.
Make a motion to approve twenty A one.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary. Rosemary? Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
So moved.
The next one is English learner group consulting contract for seventy-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars out of Title III. And this is the group that will be coming in and working with our administrators as well as coaching teachers and doing training for our, they will actually be training our principals when they come back. So I, and it does come from the categorical dollars.
Yeah, I'll move to accept twenty B eight, twenty B one.
I have a motion from Roger, a second from Rosemary. Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary. So moved.
Twenty B two is with a contract with Dr. Virginia Boris, um, who has been working for a number of years with Roosevelt Elementary. Uh, they would like to reinstate that work. Um, it's working directly with teachers, consulting with the principal, but primarily working with the teachers, developing um information, assessments and looking at data, et cetera. And they are paying for this from their Title One funds from Roosevelt.
I'll move to accept twenty B two.
Second. I have a motion from Roger, a second from Jennifer. Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, so moved.
Twenty B three, as I mentioned before, um, we're going to be re-engaging with English three D. And as uh, um, Norma presented, uh, this is consultation and training for that curriculum. We're real excited to restart that, that's tape four from Title Three funds.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty B four. Three.
A second.
Sorry, three, sorry.
Yeah, got it, second.
I was looking at the wrong line.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger. Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary. Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
So moved.
Okay, next item is mine. Uh, Blair Church and Flynn, uh, consultant services. They will be providing the land surveying services for all three phases of the modernization group projects. And it's not to exceed 21,200 coming from Measure O bond funds.
I'd like to add something to this. Mr. Sahoda asked about both twenty B four and twenty B five. Just to clarify, um, there is a standard set at the State Department regarding these services. So we do not need to go to bid. There's us, and our architects are responsible for making sure they stay within that state standard of, of billing. So just to let you know, it's, um, and those were great questions because that's new to you. So, um, anyway, just to let you know, these are typical amounts for the work that's going to be done.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty B four.
A second.
A motion from Nick, a second from Roger. Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, so moved.
Okay, next we have a services agreement with Nino and Moore to provide the hazardous materials testing services and the DTSC compliant services for the three mo, uh, three phases of the modernization projects. Uh, not to exceed 20,300, also coming from Measure O bond funds.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion from Nick, a second from Jennifer. Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
So moved.
Okay, our next contract is uh, an amendment uh, to the SIM PBK master agreement for architectural services. This is for, specifically for the drinking fountain replacement project um, at a cost of $79,176 uh, coming from ESER funds.
If you'll recall, this is a services to replace the drinking fountains with water filling stations. So they have to go through and do all the specs and everything for that work. They're doing a sidewalk this week with Andrea and Mr. Martinez with the bidders. So, uh, that, it's, uh, was it 10% of the total amount?
Twelve.
Twelve percent of the total amount, which is part of their architectural agreement.
Which, which school site is this?
Every single school site will get new drinking fountains or water fillers.
I'll move to accept twenty, what is it, twenty B six?
I'll second it.
Motion from Roger, a second from Nick. Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
So moved.
All right, our next item is with advanced IPM for a pest management proposal. This is to provide weed abatement um, at all sites and along with the solar panels and any open ground. A financial impact uh, is a total of 59,460 coming from the operations department budget.
So Mr. Sahoda asked a very good question about did we go to bid for this? We did not go to bid, um, but we did ask for proposals. So that's a, the bidding process is, is much more cumbersome. Um, we've got one, we got one proposal returned, correct?
Yes, we had the previous company declined to submit a proposal for this year.
However, your questions are very good in that I think, um, I haven't talked to Andrea about it, but when I first got here, I questioned, we need to probably go to bid on a lot of our services. So we have the best priced like for, you know, everything for the little jobs, which I don't think we totally have, but it's a very good question. And it's not, it's something that we could definitely pursue in the future. So I know that Andrea will set that up. Is this close to the last year's, um, what was budgeted last year?
Yeah, it's about $3,000 more.
More, everything's more, okay.
I'll move to accept twenty B seven.
I'll second.
A motion from Roger, a second from Jennifer. Uh, Rosemary. Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
So moved.
Hey, our next item is with the Valley Regional Occupational Program, V R O P. This is our teacher services agreement, um, our annual agreement with V R O P to provide the teachers for our programs at Selma High School. Uh, total of $297,010.43, funding source from the general fund budget.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion from Nick, a second from Jennifer. Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary. So moved.
Okay, our last contract is with community electronic information signs. So rental agreement uh, on behalf of Virtual Learning Academy. It's for advertising for the program. Uh, financial impact is us $599.99 and will come from CARES funds.
Which sign are we having that put on? The one on the 99 or the one in town?
Ninety-nine.
I believe it's the 99.
Ninety-nine.
Yeah, 99.
I thought I saw one on the, in town one.
You see, I'm on both.
Okay.
Okay.
Nice. I'll, I'll move to accept twenty, uh, B nine.
I'll second it.
A motion from Roger, a second from Nick. Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, so moved.
Twenty C is approval of authorized signature permit and mailing permit. Hold on. Excuse me. I'm getting there. So what this um, does is allow, I believe, uh, for me to, for all three of us, right?
Yes.
To sign on, uh, myself, Teresa Wood and Andrea Affronti to sign on this. For the um, mailing permit and the signature permit.
Is that twenty C?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'll move to accept twenty C.
I'll second.
Motion from Roger, a second from Jennifer. Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
So moved.
The next one is, now I lost my, uh, twenty, twenty D designate authorized signatures. And you see twenty D one is for the authorized agents for state, district and federal programs. Allowing myself, Mrs. Affronti and Mrs. Wood to be signing on that. Uh, D two, D two one designate the assistants who for support services. Mrs. Amis Affronti is designated authorized agent for matters dealing with finance revolving cash for twenty D three. Myself, Miss Affronti, Teresa Wood and Judy Peterson are authorized signers for revolving and clearing accounts. And then the cafeteria account, um, myself, Andrea Affronti, Teresa Wood and Alexandra Correo. This is normally done in December, but because Andrea's here, uh, just came, we have to do it now. And myself as well, because I wasn't here before, even though I was here, whatever, anyway. But I didn't sign. So sorry, we have to go through all this. I imagine you can do this all in one vote, without work. Okay, so twenty D.
Twenty, twenty D to twenty D four one?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move to accept that.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Roger, a second from Rosemary. Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
So moved.
The next one is um, a contract for Insights to Behavior. It's for, what Insights to Behavior is an online um, program that allows teachers, administrators, whomever to do uh, behavior plans within forty individual learning, uh, behavior plans within forty minutes, forty-five minutes or so, as well as forty-two and a half hours of online training for behavior, uh, data collection, um, and SEL activities as well. I've worked, been working with this company for a number of years and uh, we're recommending to put it here both for general ed and special ed students um, because we have so many referrals for behavior. And it will cut that process down. Uh, we'll be implementing some procedures to use this prior to referral to special ed. So that people, it gives you strat, actual strategies to work with the student after you put the information about the student behavior in. It automatically produces activities that you can tweak for that student. It's pretty phenomenal. Um, so, uh, we can use our CARES Act fund or ESER's money for this. And uh, we were, be setting up training um, throughout the year to get this rolling district-wide.
Any questions?
Any questions?
And this for the high school or?
The entire district.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
You said there is a plan in place for training?
Yes, in fact, as soon as this is signed, we can get the training set up. We're, we're going to offer our teachers and psychology, special ed teachers, paras and psychologists first to come in per four school, pay them an extra day for training. And then we'll put the procedures in place um, to roll out to all the sites. The principals will eventually get trained on it as well.
Make a motion to approve twenty E.
A second.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger. Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
So moved.
So I'm going to have um, Dr. Lingo come up here and talk about twenty F and twenty G. Since you sat that back there so well and behaved.
Thank you, um, board, um, Dr. Shepherd. Um, thank you for this opportunity. Um, the first item that I bring forward is for a third special day class teacher at Wilson Elementary. Currently, we have twenty-six students right now enrolled and only two teachers. And why this is crucial at this time is that these are kids with lots of high needs. These will be kids that will have ongoing disabilities that will stay with them pretty much the rest of their lives. And we're running into not having enough people to really make sure that they um, get focused instruction, safety, and then also keeping us out of due process. So just a few of the statistics for the kids that are currently in there. Sixty-five percent of those kids all need toileting help in some capacity. That could be from changing to just making sure that they have somebody that goes with them and walks them through that process. Forty-six of those students have autism. Many of those students also have behaviors, almost 34%. As well as we have 30% of students who qualify under intellectual disability that requires a higher level, smaller, smaller groups of learning setting. So therefore, we're asking to move forward to provide a third teacher at Wilson. This will then give us six special day class teachers, three at Wilson and three at Indianola.
So I reviewed the numbers with Dr. Lingo and definitely I recommend that we do it. Um, right now, we have no wiggle room. And really, uh, classes like this should be at eight to 10. And we're over 12 and 14, so we, we have to.
Yeah. I think, yeah. I've been in those classes. I have, I have a boy that's in those classes. And uh, what I saw last year was, or the year before, last year was not good. So I would even recommend, uh, I would even be okay, whatever you need to do for those, for those kids, we got to do.
We, Dr. Shepherd, we can use the CARE funds on this?
Um. You, actually, we could use CARE funds on it and transfer it back to SPED so it doesn't hit our MOE in case we drop. We can for a year.
If it's for case load though?
Yeah, it's kind of tough. Well, we did put the ATP in um, CARES Act because we weren't sure of numbers. So, we'll figure out and get back to, but we have to do it, but we'll tell you, we'll list it and talk about it. Um, the thing that we have to be careful is not building our maintenance of effort up. And then if we have a drop, then we have to go back and explain why there's a drop. So that may work for a year, but we'll have to look at the legal requirements for that.
We've also had some increase in special education funding from, through the SELPA for our ADA of students with disabilities as well. So that will help a little bit.
Yes, it will.
Not a lot, but it will take whatever we can get.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve twenty F.
A second.
I have a motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger. Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Um, the next item is just basically looking at coverage for our preschool program, which is also pretty much the same makeup of our little guys, um, kinder for second and third. We have a dual program, basically not a dual program. We have a AM program and a PM program. And right now, they're going to probably be around 10 kids per each class. They're going to run just a little under three hours. Right now, we have one teacher with one instructional assistant at five and three quarters. And then we have one instructional assistant at four hours. I'm asking that the four-hour assistant become a five and three four, three-quarter assistant so that we can make sure that we can have full coverage or at least have some wiggle room in there to make sure that we have coverage for our kids with the most intense needs.
Yeah, a motion to accept twenty G.
A motion from Roger, a second from Rosemary. Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, so moved.
Doc, oh, Dr. Shepherd, uh, I know we're watching everything fiscally, but I, I think with special ed, uh, we really have to get them help. Like you had said, nine or 10 kids in a class, that's, that's even a lot, to be honest, because.
Depends on their disability, but yeah, we need to definitely watch our numbers. But also, one thing that we talked today and I'll share next week is that we're going to be doing some training on, you know, identification of students, how to move students and dismissing students, our number, you know. So not that we're trying to get rid of them, but we may have some gaps where maybe kids don't qualify. But no, I totally get that. I am totally supportive of that.
Sweet.
So I want to thank the board very much and especially Dr. Shepherd for supporting these two items on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lingo.
Okay, Mrs. Brahas, Reese, would you come back to the podium? She's going to be talking about the single plans for student achievement. Uh, we need an approval. We need an approval, and by the time she gets here, I'll probably say everything. But it was not about you, it's about me reading fast. But, you know, we have to approve these.
Sorry, my leg both leaked.
Well, last time she was in the restroom, so. Go ahead.
So this is an annual, actually a biannual, because they, these plans will come back to you early fall, early winter. The single plan for student achievement, each school is required to have this plan. The plan delineates the services that they will be providing, the resources they will be purchasing, and using their Title I funds. All of our schools and some unified, including independent study, receive Title I funds. All of the plans were presented and were created with collaboration and input with school site councils, also with input from the English Learner Advisory Committee of each of the school sites, and then technical support from myself and my office in terms of budgets and those types of things. The plans, what will change is the funding amount based on projected carryover. We expect that sites will be receiving additional Title I money, so you'll see revised plans. We're really, really excited that we're able to, that we've been able to make the cycle work for us so that we're here now and we start the year with approved plans for our schools. It's taken us a couple of years to get there. If you remember, in the past, we'd be here in the fall. And so I'm really, really thankful to our principals, their school site councils, all of their staff that have worked hard to make sure these plans are in place when they leave for the school year. And with your approval, then they have approval to implement those plans and use those funds beginning August when we come back.
I'll make a motion to approve 20H.
I'll second.
A motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger, Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'm doing this. I'd like to request that I am appointed as the alternate to the State Center Adult Education Consortium Executive Board. Mr. Badoya is the selected individual to attend these meetings, and I will be the alternate in case he is not able to make those board meetings.
I'll move to accept 20A.
A motion from Roger, a second from Rosemary, Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
So moved.
Excuse me one minute, it kicked me out again. Okay, the next item is a resolution FY 2203. We would like to establish the Warehouse Revolving Fund, Fund 6600, in order to track the warehouse inventory. This is something that Daniel has requested in order to keep a better track of what goes in and out of our warehouse.
I'll move to accept 20J.
Motion from Roger, a second from Rosemary, Rosemary. Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
So moved.
I love that Daniel wants to keep an eye on things.
So I learned just this, within the last month or two, that we have a very in-depth asset, equipment assets inventory that he's created.
Wow.
That was never shared with me till recently. Not from him, because it was never from other people. But anyway, it was really, it's pretty amazing. So every time we purchase a piece of equipment, it goes into his inventory, and he can tell you by year what has been purchased and where it's supposed to be.
Where it's supposed to be, I love it.
Uh, yeah.
Yep.
Just thought I'd.
It's a good one.
She didn't know either. It's pretty phenomenal.
All right, our next item is the Declaration of Obsolete or Damaged Textbooks, a surplus property. We have, the list of books is there for you. It's the life sciences, physical sciences, and math skills and math concepts textbooks. They have no value, so we will be proceeding with the disposal of the textbooks with your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve 20K.
I'll second.
Motion from Jennifer, a second from Roger, myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
So moved.
There's a proposal before the board to create the deputy principal, the second deputy principal position at Selma High. You heard from Dr. Martinez this evening and also from Dr. Shepherd regarding this information and the proposed restructuring. And again, Dr. Martinez's plans for her administrative team as well as for staff changes throughout Selma High. So in this proposal, I went back to the original changes that were made, where the two assistant principal positions were eliminated. One deputy principal position was created, and the days were increased for the program manager position. So again, this furthers that proposal and eliminates that program manager position and creates a second deputy principal position. Going back and looking at the total savings at the time, even with creating the second deputy principal position, there is still a net savings of $132,279. And so I would recommend that the board accept Dr. Martinez's request to create the second deputy principal position. If you have any questions regarding that.
I'd be happy to move to motion for 20, was it 20L? 20L.
I'll second.
A motion from Roger, a second from Jennifer, Jennifer.
Aye.
Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, so moved.
Thank you. And with the long-distance field trip requests, these are all ag-related for different competitions that the students are going to throughout the fall and spring. And it's a little bit different format. We're moving to an electronic approval system for the field trip requests. So again, I would recommend your approval of the long-distance field trips.
Nice to see you back on here. I'll make a motion to approve 20M.
Yeah, I like you too.
A motion from Jennifer, a second from Rosemary, Roger.
Aye.
Nick.
Aye.
Rosemary.
Aye.
Myself, aye, Jennifer.
Aye.
So moved. At this time, if any board members would like to report on anything going on?
No, I would just like to say that I really like these board meetings. They're exciting because we're moving, we're just moving it, man. So whoever hasn't been paying attention, then it is what it is. But for us here, we're moving in a different direction, and I love it.
Anyone else have anything to share? It's summer. It's summertime. All right, back to you, Dr. Shepherd.
So I just want to point out that next Monday evening, we have another board meeting. And I appreciate the board agreeing to that because we need to go over some things in preparation for opening a school. And so anyway, just thank you for doing that. I know it takes time, we'll keep moving. Today, we had a meeting with SIM PDK, and I sat there with Mrs. Affronti and Rocky Martinez, and we picked pink colors, and they're going to be job walking this week. Is it this week or in a couple of weeks? Yeah, painting is this week, so three schools. We're going to have a little different color selection, and so that's happening. And then we're having the water, we will be bringing that back in August. So things are not moving as fast as I'd like. They need to move a lot faster. They don't like me calling and asking. But so some of the work will be done while kids are there, and I thought that was better than nothing. So we're going to just warn the principals. In fact, we'll be bringing back in August some HVAC work that we said, you want to wait till next summer to start it? And I said, no, we need to get going now, so we'll just have to accommodate it. We got to keep moving. So anyway, some really positive things. And we also talked today about, we'll be bringing to the board, you approved some standard for furniture, and Dr. Martinez needs two classrooms full of more desks. So instead of buying the old desks, we're going to pilot two roomfuls of furniture of this new design. And then also, at Eric White, we're going to do a primary and an intermediate classroom of the new furniture so people can see it function before we do this district-wide. So I'm real excited about that. And PDK, SIM PDK brought a different furniture company in with significant decreases than what was presented before, so we're real happy about that. Real happy about that. So it's kind of fun. And then also, we're having help with, we're opening a new TK program. Our furniture, we're going to be piloting brand-new TK furniture as well, and the company is helping us just get that done. And so hopefully, that will arrive in time. So anyway, so that's exciting. So banners will be going up all over at the school sites regarding us reopening there. They came in, and all over, you'll see the Virtual Academy signs all over. And we are currently, I asked her to come next week to give a brief overview of where she's at, Michelle Dominguez, so I thought you'd be interested to know. We got a lot going on.
I like seeing the little yard signs.
Yeah, those are kind of fun. So, and Jill Wagner is helping her get some PR with, you know, working on that, getting that advertised through our local stations. So we'll see how that goes. Thank you for your help in that, Jill. She's been real helpful to Michelle, so launching this program. That's it for tonight.
No, it's not. We're going back into closed session.
Remind, we're going back into closed session. Ruined your evening, didn't I? Aw, darn.
So this would close out open session, and we're going to go back into closed session. One more item.